All right. I want to call to order the work session for December 19th, 2022, for the Board of Education, for our work session. We have a quorum, so we will proceed. And we're asked Dr. Helen Lindsey if she would lead us in our invocation today.
Let us pray. Most holy and wise God, our heaven and father, we bow here this afternoon to say thank you for another beautiful Lord's day, also for your mercy and your grace. As we go into this meeting, our heaven and father, please guide us, direct us, that we may do things to be pleasing on our sight, and also for the kids throughout Granville County Schools here. Go with us and stand by us. And we leave this meeting here, we will still be one board with one voice. In Jesus' name I do pray, amen.
Amen. And Mr. Pace, if you would lead us in our pledge of allegiance, please.
Stand, please. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible through liberty and justice for all.
The next item is comments from the board chair. One thing I want to remind everyone of today is, since we are live streaming, to be sure to speak clearly into your microphone. Sometimes we all sort of lean back and we want to make sure everyone can hear us and we can hear each other. I think some of us have, this past week, a couple of weeks, have made some trips out to our schools. We've had wonderful school programs. I know Ms. Hayes, I saw you at the South Granville concert with the Holly people. That was wonderful. I made it to Wilton. And if anybody else wants to comment on any programs, they were all wonderful. And I think it's so good when we can get out in schools and see what's going on. And it keeps us focused on why we do what we do when we come to a board meeting. Anyone else have a comment on that?
Madam Chair, I attended West Oxford's Christmas program. It was a wonderful, I had never seen so many little children in all my life. But they had a great crowd. The auditorium was full, standing room only. In fact, I stood on the back wall. But anyway, it was great. And there was a lot of people there. And the children did, they just had a wonderful program.
Thank you, Mr. Pace. This morning, staff and Ms. Hayes, myself, we met out at Tar River this morning. And Representative-elect, I guess you'd say, Matt Winslow, wanted to come and see some schools. And we had a wonderful tour of Tar River and South Granville and Holly. And Ms. Hayes, if you'd like to speak to a little bit more about what we did?
Okay. So, we met at Tar River this morning and got to visit a couple of classrooms and see what all the kiddos were up to. And it was really good to go in and see that they were, they were hard at work. I was expecting a lot of celebration and, you know, pajama day type of stuff, just, you know, getting ready for the holidays. But it's actually really good to go in and see that the teachers were still in there teaching curriculum and they were working on their PPL projects and just all kinds of learning going on. So that was really nice. And then, you know, South Granville with the exams and everything, it was, you know, it was clear that they were all hard at work there. And, you know, the kids were in their classrooms doing what they were supposed to be doing. So that was nice. And then Holly was really, really great. We had the National Junior Honor Society students lead us around, which was really special because those eighth graders really take on a leadership role and do a lot of volunteer hours at our school, running concession stands and stuff like that. So that was really special to have them show us around the campus.
Yeah, we saw some fabulous kids, hard at work today, hard at work. I think they were testing too at South Granville, but we got to see some CTE classes, which is always impressive. We got to see some of the animals. That was fun, too. We had to have a little fun. Okay. We only have, well, before we get there, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. McLean and you can make a few comments.
Thank you so much, Chairwoman Williams. I too just want to echo my sentiments. This morning was really nice. And I thank the executive team and our board members for being there. It's always special to get to visit our schools. I would like to acknowledge for today's meeting, we have two board members who are with us virtually. We have Board Member Anderson, who is with us virtually, and we have Board Member Frederick. So you can see them on the screen. And we do have quorum, all of our board members are present today. And I would just like to say happy holidays to each and every one in our community, on our board, and in our district. Our school system was busy at work, not only with programs and concerts and festivals. Our executive team and board certainly got to get out, but our schools have been hard at work. I'd like to thank our high school students and teachers for those exams. Hats off to each of you. Some of those scores are coming in. And I can see the growth in some areas. Thank you so very much for that diligence. And I just hope everyone has a really, really nice holiday season. And we look forward to seeing all of you safely in the new year. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Can I add one more thing? Okay. So, the little brown bags in front of you guys, I just, they're not really from me and that's why there's no tag on it. They are actually, the ornament that you will find inside was made by a student. It was designed by one of our rock star students, Madison. She actually has her own graphic design business. And so, she did a really nice design for all of the staff at South Granville. And so, I loved it so much that I had her, I was like, oh my goodness, wouldn't that be so wonderful for all of you guys? So, she designed that and had those made. So, I just thought that that was really special. And, you know, she wanted to make sure that all of you got, you guys got those.
This is amazing. Thank you so much.
They are so cute.
And thank you, Madison, wherever you are. This is incredible. Thank you so much, Ms. Hayes. This is beautiful.
And, hi there. Can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Okay. I just want to say I'll definitely drop by and get mine.
It's here, it's here, Ms. Anderson.
When I get back in town. And I just want you all to know as well that, you know, last week, I did get around to the schools. And it was just great meeting some of the members of the schools and at the principal office and the staff and just, you know, telling each and every one of them how much, you know, we appreciate their efforts and everything. And it was just great getting to all the schools. And I did get a chance to get to all of them. So, it was great sessions just to let them know how much we appreciate them, all of the high schools, middles, and elementary. So I took care of everybody. Thank you.
And Mrs. Anderson, I'll add, I got to visit Early College on Friday and they enjoyed the candy you took them. They acknowledged it. So thank you very much.
Sure.
Yes, ma'am. That concludes my report.
We only have one thing on our agenda. And that is continuing the discussion on redistricting and consolidation conversation. And we, we do need to keep in mind that our staff, whatever we do, they need time, adequate time, to get plans in motion, as well as our parents and students. So, I think we all need to keep that in mind as we move forward. So what we'll do is sort of what we did last time and just go around and see if anyone has any additional thoughts, changed any thoughts or whatever. And any discussion that we might want to ask that person. Does anyone want to start? Ms. Hayes?
Calling on me a lot today.
Yeah.
So, I've done quite a bit of thinking. And it seems like the common thread and what Mr. Pace sort of pointed out at our last meeting was, I really agree with the fact that the focus needs to be on what to do with Holly Middle School at this point. It seems to be the biggest need fiscally. So I think that's probably the thing that we need to tackle first. I would, I remember when you brought up the idea that we could possibly make the move to Creemore Elementary and try to make it a little bit more fiscally sound. That there was, I know there was a study done that included building a gym. And that you maybe had brought up something about, you know, not having to do that right away, utilizing the athletic facilities that are, that are still at Holly and usable, which I think would be a really nice option to explore. So I'm absolutely on board with, with that. And then, of course, exploring the possibility of the K-8 campuses, possibly at Wilton and Stovall Shaw. I like both of those ideas.
Ms. Lindsey, Dr. Lindsey?
Well, I still liked my last idea about making Creemore Elementary a middle school for, could be on a temporary basis here, temporary consolidation. And let the high schools remain as they are. South Granville and Granville Central, where. I happened to be at, excuse me, I happened to be at Granville Central first year that they opened up. I was the high school counselor there. And we had some pretty tense moments. Because you know, they poor kids from way up District 90 South Granville make that school complete for the first two years or so. And one side saying that they are at our school and way up they want to be there because they was coming, you know, crossing lines here. And right now, we, we got some little unrest in our schools just across the county here. And I think to combine the high schools to make, for numerous reasons, it may create more of a headache for us having than trying to let them remain as they are. And plus, you know, seniors right now, they have been through a lot the last two years with pandemic here, with the things going on in our schools, in our communities as well, mental health issues as well. So I'm just thinking that maybe we should let our high schools remain as they are and work on trying to get, transfer those kids from Holly to Creemore Elementary and maybe to Wilton as well, depends on where they live in the district here. And that way, maybe be more cost effective than trying to even change, build gyms and things of that nature. Because, you know, money is a factor right now. Of course, money is generated by them kids who are in our district as well here. So I'm thinking, keep my idea previously by having Creemore Middle School and high schools remain as they are and not to consolidate.
Thank you. Dr. Frederick, would you like to take your turn?
Yeah, can you guys hear me all right?
Yeah. Great, thanks.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I mean, I think the biggest thing to me is I'm pretty flexible in the strategy as long as the occupancy percentages and the finances of it all makes sense. The thing that I proposed last session two weeks ago was entirely based around targeting the schools that had the largest outstanding maintenance budgets and then reallocating students to have the best distribution of occupancy percentages. So logistically and other strategies, I'm pretty flexible on. Those are the two big things that are most important to me is making the schools most effectively staffed and filled with students and then financially sound. So I'm flexible on strategy, but those are the two big things for me. Just to reiterate, last week, or two weeks ago, I just, all I spoke on was the ones with the largest outstanding budgets and then how we can, you know, redistribute those students and teachers and stuff. But I'm open to other things if people are, feel really stern, or really, really firm on a couple of strategy points that they've offered.
Thank you. Ms. LeBrett?
Yeah. So, I guess for me, I'm in a similar boat as, as Mr. Frederick. I also would like to see us make sure that we keep the least amount of stress on teachers at the forefront of our minds as well. Just with the workload that they're dealing with, especially with some of the lack of teachers that we've got, all the positions that we have open, I really want to see that these consolidations really bring our teacher shortages to a minimum. That also being said, it is interesting to me that as we go around the table for the same discussion yet again, how many, how many months later, that people still tend to cling to the idea that they originally presented. And I guess one thing that I would just like to bring up from having done this once before at least, is just that I don't, I think we can all agree that we're probably not going to all just say, yeah, this person's idea is awesome and let's just go with that. And so, to really come at it from more a looking at everybody's idea and seeing where a middle ground is most likely would be the best way to go. Because I think, you know, I just think, I think for us to stick our heels in and say, my idea is the best way, is not going to get any votes to, like, for our majority. So, that's kind of where my head's at.
That leaves me, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I have, I've sort of looked, looked at everybody's ideas that was put forth at the last meeting. And I tried to come up with some thing that everybody pretty much agreed on within their comments. And the one thing that I came up with, well, it was obvious to me that everybody said we need, we need to close Holly's school. I think that was something that everybody agreed on. And so, my next thing was just, was what to do with children if we close Holly's school, of course. And what comes to mind is moving them to Creemore Elementary School. And, and the reason I say that, because I was trying to figure out, number one, what would be disruptive for the children to move. And I think if we kept them all together, that would be the same as them being at, they'd be at a different school with all the friends and people be, be there. The other thing that, that I gave some, some thought to was how disruptive it's going to be to the parent and community. And I think them understanding the condition of Holly and knowing that something has to happen there. Because most of them want the children out of there. We would, that would be the best thing to do if we looked at it from a community or parent perspective. So, I would think about closing Holly, moving the kids to Creemore Elementary and renaming it, really. Actually, we could probably, if it's legal, to make it the Holly Annex with the idea that growth comes and we need a middle school and we have to rebuild Holly or whatever. It would have the same name. And it would also, I think it would be less effective on the community if we kept it, that name with the possibility of moving it back there at a decent time. If we could just name it the Holly Annex. I don't know if, I'm looking at my attorney, she is smiling like that might work. But anyway, so, I'm going to, I'm going to leave it at that. I mean, and as far as, you know, there was a lot of ideas and thoughts about moving students to, well, there was one thing, they talked about closing, somebody talked about closing Central and moving the kids there. And Dr. Lindsey gave a good example of what happens when you combine students from one, from two schools, which is not always good. We have a lot of problems with the school environments at this point, anyway. And I don't, I don't, I don't think we need to do that, not at this point, anyway. And I was trying to figure out, think about this in terms of what we could do in the, not the immediate future, but the near future, if this would work for the 23, 24 school year, maybe. If we just moved the kids from Holly to, to Creemore. That's something that the staff might be able to do. And I don't want to, as a board, I don't think we need to put any pressure on them to give them a timeline to do stuff. But at the same token, I think if we look at it in terms of what we can do first, that's going to take care of getting students out of the school that we really need to get them out of, that would be, in my opinion, the best way to do it. And, and that's pretty much, I mean, I would like to make that our first step in this consolidation deal, is to do what we can do now as opposed to, you know, disrupting the whole system. And, you know, we talked about making Wilton and Stovall Shaw K-8 schools. And, I mean, they could work through that depending on, of course, it depend on how many kids would want to do it. Because you couldn't do it for, you know, I would think they would have to come up with a number in order for that to happen. And people need to understand that. We can't just say, this is going to happen if we need to have, you know, 50 kids or 70 or whatever, agree to do that. Because our system being choice, I mean, we're not going to change any of that. So, if parents don't decide to send the children to a K-8 school, then we might have one in the north and not one in the south or vice versa. And we got to realize that going in. And I think, well, that's all I need to say for now. Because I want to really get through this part, the elementary part, before we can get kids out of Holly, before we move into the high school or other areas that we might want to tackle later. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. I started looking at some of the figures on the high schools. And of course, ADM changes. This has probably been our year that we've lost the least in quite a while. And I'm hoping it's stabilizing. And we are poised for growth in our county. Looking at Vance County, which is right next to us, they are projected to actually go down in percentage of growth. And we're in the top 25 counties. We're number 22 as far as percentage. So, it's coming. We don't know when. We don't know if what we do will last five years, seven years, or what. But it is coming. When you combine, if you're just using this year's numbers at South Granville and Granville Central, if you were to consolidate, you would have approximately 351 too many children for the space without, you know, and would force obviously redistricting. And it's, as a point that I think it's important to remember, it's 132, I believe it is right now, are in Granville Central by choice. A lot of those are from the Webb School District, from my understanding. Probably not all, but some are. It seems like to me, if we were to do that, that we would almost be eliminating choice for our students at the high school level. Because the numbers would be full. I passed out a sheet showing the different CTE programs and pathways at the three schools. And there are some similarities. And there are also some that are different. So that's a consideration, too, where kids have a choice where they may already be and be in working on those pathways. That's one thing that's important to me with the children. And as far as it's financial, too, it's, it's, it's always a balance. It's my understanding when Joe Toller closed, a lot of kids were lost to charter schools. In fact, a lot of them went over to the Person County side, to Bethel Hill, I believe. And with this much disruption, we could very well save money on one end, but lose it on our ADM. Some parents are saying, my child's not going there. I'm doing something different. You know, you know how that goes. You're going to always make somebody upset. But with the growth coming and all the factors considered, my feeling is that we leave the high schools alone. I think Creemore, using that for the Holly students, makes sense. As Mr. Pace said, there's a lot of love for that Holly Middle School from everybody in the community. But it's also a lot of historical factors that we have to think about, the Reverend Holly's legacy. And people do want that continued. And we would be using the athletic facilities. So it would be part of Holly's school. It just wouldn't be as usable. And obviously, there are things that could be repurposed there with some creativity, I think. So, I think the finances is always a consideration. But I think the children of Granville County are an investment. And I know we talk about business models and so forth. But having been in business myself and retired now, there are some times in business where you make the decision to cut. And there are some times you make the decision to stay the course. Sometimes you make the decision to invest and try to improve on what you have. So I think that's something to think about. We can't make it all on dollars and cents. We have to think about our community and our students. And there are advantages to larger schools, but there are also disadvantages. Our kids have been through a lot of learning loss, as we know. Whether, wherever anybody wants to put the blame, it's beside the point at this point. We need to move forward. And my feeling is that these kids are going to benefit by a smaller environment rather than a larger environment. And the emotional stress, yes, they get over it. But high school is a little different than moving a child to elementary school. They've got an identity with that school. That's part of them at that point. And I just feel like the extra stress on the students would be a little bit much. And it may not help them academically at this point in their career. So that's my thoughts.
I have a question, Chairperson Williams. What could we do with the good building on Holly's campus? The new building back? How can we make that still be very alive and viable in the community? Center as education center or academy or how can we work with that?
Well, you know, I'm, I'm a firm believer in, I love pre-K. I don't know how feasible financially that's kind of a thing you have to do, a whole lot of special stuff. But it's certainly a thought process, too. I think there's things we can make available to the community to use. But the, also with moving students, the ones that would have to be redistricted in the elementary school, possibly even Granville Academy students might, could use that facility or, or some other program. Nothing in stone. I think that's just something the staff would have to explore. But I think we should use that facility as much as we can.
Madam Chair, can I respond?
Yes. Can I, gentlemen, yes, I just, this is Ethel. Please don't forget I'm here virtually. I know we're opening up into discussions, but I thought at first. Okay. I just wanted to give my two cents before we go into general discussion, if that's okay with everyone.
Yeah, go for it.
Go, go for it.
Madam Chair? Okay. No, I, I've heard this, you know, what everyone has recommended from their source. And I'm sort of like Ms. LeBrett. You know, I, I really think there are some good things that have been laid out there. And I'm not going to say that my main focus is on one thing and one thing only. Because I do agree that I've gone through all of the notes from the last session. I've gone through notes from previous sessions. And yes, I, there are some great ideas that's been placed on the table. But then, as I heard, I believe Mr. Pace says, you know, keep the focus on our children. You know, I would love to say, hey, I graduated from South Granville. I was there when the school started or whatever. And, you know, that's my identity. But it's not- started or whatever, and you know, that's my identity. But it's not the elementary, the middle school identity. And yes, I do agree that the younger folks can, you know, get through this a lot easier than the high schoolers, you know, especially at this time. Keeping in mind that the last two years has brought many things upon our young folks, middle school as well as high school, all of the school sessions, really, I do believe. But just going back through what everyone had talked about and have talked about with regards to the layout of what we received from the notes last week, I do, you know, as little disruption as we can as we move out of this pandemic period. And believe me, I'm beginning to have second thoughts that we're going to move out of this pandemic. We're going to have to do what we can do for the parents, the community, and especially our youth as we try to make these tough decisions that has to be made. And, you know, being that Holly, I looked at the location of Holly, I looked at the locations of the other middle schools, and, you know, we know that they're on different sides of 85, Butner Stadium, and also Northern Granville. And then Holly is over on the southern side, as I went to all of the schools last week, every last one of them that I visited, I made sure just to keep in mind, hmm, how far is Tar River here from Wilton? Then from Wilton, I went down to Mount Energy, and then to Creedmoor, and then over to Holly. And just looking at the locations, and I think it would be less stress on our young folks if, in fact, we tried to keep with the closure of Holly, which I think everybody knows that because of the millions that it would take to redo that school, that Creedmoor that's on the table, that would be a lot less inconvenience transportation-wise, school-wise and everything for, to possibly look at that consolidation or moving the Holly over to Creedmoor. We have to look at all avenues and everything that goes along with this, with the transportation, the parents, the bus schedules and everything. So just like to say, I am open. I like listening to everything I just heard, and, but keeping in mind what it's going to do for the community and the students and everyone. To me, that conversion of Holly or the consolidation of the Holly School take into Creedmoor with that closure, to me, I think is a very good first step to take and try to keep everyone knowledgeable that we have the best interest of all of our schools in Granville County in mind. So from there, I'm ready now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Yeah, I was about to respond to what Dr. Lindsay had said about the Holly School. The, I guess, the eighth grade wing and the cafeteria is, well, it's in great condition, really. And, you know, I don't want to see us lose that. And, you know, as far as what can happen with it, I think the administration, if we say to the administration, we want to leave Holly there and use it for something, some purpose, be it whatever they can figure out it to be. Because if we don't lose it, don't use it, we normally lose it, stuff when we don't use it. And I think that part of that school could continue to be an asset to the community as well as our school system by letting the administration look at what they can use it for that's going to be beneficial to the students especially, but also to the community. So, and, you know, I think about what we did when I was going through this process with Mary Potter, when we moved students out, it was under the impression that we were going to use it. And it's a great, well, we're in it now, so it was something that remained useful to the system, to the school system and the community also. And we could do the same thing with Creedmoor, with Holly, if we move the students out of it. And so, and, I mean, that's where I am right now. I think we need to leave this meeting today with the understanding that the community and the administration is going to move forward in some direction. And before I, well, before I make a motion that we move in a direction.
I have a couple things to say.
I guess I'll give everybody else a chance to say something before I do that.
I would like to address the issue that Ms. LeBrett brought up, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay. So you, I mean, you brought up a very valid point about the current staffing issues that we are having, and specifically at the middle school level, and even more specifically at Holly Middle School. And please do not misunderstand me when I say what I'm about to say, and please don't think that I'm pointing fingers, because I'm not. I was just watching from an outside perspective, what the discussions that were had around this table last year, I think that the staffing shortages, and this is what I hear as well from the community and from, and people that have left this district and staff positions, that the staff turnover extremely high. That one campus is unfortunately a result of discussions had around this table last year, and how, you know, there was no, like Mr. Pease said, there was no clear path forward. There was, there was a lot of things put out there and a lot of things voted on, and a lot of motions made, and people listened to parts and not other parts, or they heard things and didn't hear other things. And a lot of people left because, you know, we as a board, or, you know, the former board members had, you know, had discussions, and it wasn't communicated well what a plan was to go forward. And so that's why we unfortunately lost so, so many staff, and why it was particularly bad at that one campus. And so my hope is, is that we will have that staff being built back up, and we have brought in some amazing staff members to replace some of those positions.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. I would concur with you totally that we need to have a plan going forward, because we can discuss it forever. Everything you go at has pros and it has cons, that's for sure. And nothing's going to be perfect. But the community needs to understand that we are doing something for Holly students that will work for a while, and at such time as we can get the funding or the numbers get so large with the influx of people, it may be three years, it could be five, it could be more, we don't know. That campus is there, we have a part of it that we're using, it's called Holly Middle School, where we go to to put the major classes would be, like Mr. Pease said, Holly School Annex. The identity would remain, and right now you're talking about the Holly thing. I've gotten wind from a call that some parents are very concerned and very teachers concerned at Granville Central. So the quicker we can move forward with our plan and just stick to it, nothing's going to be perfect, it may be a bump or two in the road, but the quicker we can do that and let our, our community and our students and parents know, the better it's going to be for our staffing as well as for our parents and students. So I would certainly concur with you on that.
Madam Chair.
Sure.
Sure, go ahead. Dr. Frederick.
Oh, cool, thank you. Yeah, sorry. I just, Ethel can understand where I'm coming from. We just have to interrupt and interject, because we can't otherwise do anything. So I apologize for that. But I think part of what we need to decide today is how many problems we want to tackle. If the easiest thing and the lowest hanging fruit we want to attack is just the solution for Holly, it's very easy to close that, and I think we can all immediately agree that we just move them to Creedmoor, we can rename it Holly Middle, and then we can move forward from there. If we close Creedmoor as an elementary and redistribute those, those students, our occupancy percentages for the elementary schools go from 64% average up to 73% as an average. So that is a good step forward when it comes to how many students are sitting in the different elementary schools. However, that doesn't satisfy, or that doesn't change the fact that our middle schools only have 58% occupancy. So if that's the only problem that we want to accomplish today, I think we can all agree on that. Now, depending on what else we want to accomplish, you know, if we want to raise the occupancy percentages in the middle schools, I think the only way to accomplish that is by consolidating one middle school. That doesn't have to happen, again, it depends on what problems we want to solve. And I think the incentive for helping with occupancy percentages and stuff, and I respectfully disagree with you, Chairwoman, on when it comes to small learning environments creating robust, I mean, like having that be a positive thing, because like, I think the track record of our learning outcomes and all that kind of stuff over the last couple of years, obviously there's a lot of variables, but the population's going down, the education scores, the learning loss, all of those things are trending in the same direction. And I think having higher occupancy numbers helps with staffing, helps with quality of education, helps with a lot of different things when it comes to state safety, a lot more students around the area and all that. So that's part of where I'm coming from when it comes to that. I also think having higher occupancy in schools helps a lot with athletics, which is what our athletic director was speaking on last week, our last meeting. So that's the other thing, is if, if we want to target higher occupancy to help with things from an athletic perspective as well, to help be more competitive with some of the neighboring schools that are in the same class size group, the two, three split that we're in or whatever, those are some of the things, which has a lot of ripple effects into the community. I mean, if we have more successful programs, that's going to be a lot more incentive for students to want to go out for those programs, which causes community involvement. I mean, like, if we, my, coming from my background, I mean, a traditionally non-spectator sport, sport was golf, but we had a very successful golf program when I was in high school, and we drew some pretty successful crowds. We had a lot of community involvement around that sport, which, again, is not generally a spectator sport, and it's because we were historically pretty successful. So there's a lot of, we're talking about community a lot, there's a lot of rallying around successful programs and stuff, and one of the best ways to accomplish that is by having higher occupancy, to have bigger class sizes to draw from for those academic programs. That would satisfy some of the JV requirements or openings that we were talking about, how we don't have any JV programs, some of the more, I mean, more students to draw on, that doesn't automatically make us more successful programs, right? But having more students will help give us some of that foundation for that to happen. So that's some of the stuff that I was speaking on about looking into whether or not we want to consolidate anything else besides Holly slash Creedmoor. So I think it kind of depends on which problems we want to target, and we don't have to target all of those right now. We can easily just do the Holly-Creedmoor, you know, conversion thing today, because I think we can all see that. But depending on what else we would like to accomplish, I think that's what we need to make as the conversation for right now.
Thank you.
I have another.
I was going to say.
Yeah, if you don't mind. Something else, I think that we've been talking a lot about this is what we would like to see as a result happen, and a lot of us are talking around in circles. And something I think that would be helpful is looking, after having looked at all of the different ideas thrown out there, it might be a beneficial exercise to go around the table and find out what are the hills people are willing to die on? Seriously, like, what are your non-negotiables? Like, what are you looking at through all of this that you're going, there is no chance that I would ever vote for that? But, because I think it honestly gets, it gets everybody's honesty out on the table so that we know exactly where everyone stands. Because otherwise, then we can keep coming up with different ideas, and people may not vote for it, and we don't know why, and so.
Excuse me. I think it's time we stop kicking the can down the road. I've been at this table ever since the beginning of this, about 10 years, no, not quite that long, but it's been a long time. And of course, there are needs that we are not going to, everybody agreed to, agree on. And, but, you know, Ms. Hayes made a good point, was talking about the number of people that have left us as a result of what has gone on around this table, which has been kicking the can down the road for the last couple of years. And, you know, we can, well, I'm not here to continue doing that, number one. I understand that we have some concerns, problems that we need to solve, but you got to start somewhere. And with that in mind, you know, the idea that if we could make, well, I'm going to make a motion, but I just want to frame it before I make it. And because I think, number one, if we, if we vote to move the students out of Holly, then we need to say to the administration, we don't want to get rid of it, we need to be able to use that eighth grade wing and the cafeteria for some purpose for the school system and the community. And having said that, and I think they can probably do that, I haven't said that, you know, we, there's a process to close the school. And if you're going to close Holly, I mean, close, not close Holly, close Creedmoor, I'm going to make a motion that we do that, that we do a study to close Creedmoor Elementary School. And in doing so, I'm going to move that we move Holly students there and call it the Holly Annex. And I'll get our attorney to clear that up if it needs clearing up, so we'll be legal.
I don't see any problem with, I think you can move the Holly name wherever you want to, I think that's within the board's discretion. And you could have New Holly and Historic Holly if you wanted to, or something like that. So the only thing I might suggest is just to leave yourself some room, perhaps stating that the Holly name be preserved with the school.
That the Holly name be preserved without necessarily specifying that it be Annex versus New Holly versus, but that is really up to you.
Can I ask a random point of clarification? What, what needs to happen, I guess, how much do, how do I want to phrase this? What, when we make a decision like this, like hypothetically, we immediately vote, like, vote to do the study and move Holly to Creedmoor, how much of that process do we as the board need to discuss? Like, does right now we have to decide the best use for those other buildings, or can that be flexibly done in the future? Or does that all have to be packaged as this part of this decision? Like, how much of the moving pieces of some of these decisions come from us versus down the road, like downstream effects of our decision today?
That's a great thing to clarify, and I'm happy to address it. You definitely don't have to make those decisions about how to use the building today. In fact, you wouldn't even take action to close or move any school today. What you can do today is move forward with a study and/or a public hearing, scheduling a public hearing, or just a study and then discuss the public hearing later. So, but as far as, I mean, you can certainly include in your action that you want to retain the building, or someone can make a motion that we, you know, retain the building, but that's, you definitely don't have to make any decisions about how it would be used.
Okay, but long-term, the use of those buildings would be a board decision, not like a administration decision?
Well, let me, I guess, let me put it this way. Any decision to sell or close the building would definitely be a board decision. And I, and you can always direct that you want the administration to bring you proposals for this type of use or that type of use, or just direct that you want them to put it to school system use. But certainly it could not be gotten rid of without board action.
What studies, if any, do we have that are currently open that we would not need to officially go, say, like, we need to reopen a study and all that stuff?
So you did a study of Creedmoor, of clo, I'm sorry, you did a study of closing Creedmoor in 2020, I think it was, the last additions were made in the spring of 2021. So I would recommend that you at least provide for it to be updated, to make sure that you have the most current information, but you wouldn't have to start from scratch. Much of the information would be the same.
And a question I have for that with attorney, with regards to that, yeah, another updated one, and that this updated one would actually include not just the school being closed in the updated version we got in 2021, but with the movement of Holly to, you know, the consolidation or movement of Holly Middle School to Creedmoor, which is the purpose, we are looking to close that, and that study include all of the costs and things that goes with that?
Right. So the motion that was, that is on the floor is to study closing Creedmoor and moving the Holly students into the Creedmoor building. And so the previous study, as I'm looking at it, was a study of closing Creedmoor. I think I think that the logistics of then filling it with middle school students is something that you would add to, to the, to make this, to study this particular proposal. You know, a lot of that is information that you have from various different explorations that the staff have done, but I, I think the motion includes both.
I have a question. We have talked about the possibility of doing the K-8 at Wilton and at Stovall Shaw, and if so, I think, Ms. Breck, I know you had it in yours, starting with the sixth grade, because we don't know, it'd be a little bit much to probably try to do that in one fell swoop. So would we want to make a separate motion if we wanted to explore that for going K-6 at those two schools to see what interest there is, because the choice stuff will be going out soon?
Yes, so I think that would be an entirely separate motion and separate discussion, and would probably include directing the administration to do a survey, do a study, or to come back to the board with a presentation on what, what it would cost and what would the logistics be of making that conversion?
Yeah, I think, my, my, so based on where we're headed at this current moment, talking about Creedmore, putting Holly there, having two middle schools in the south, and then now also if we were to plan on putting a K, future K-8 at Wil-, I mean, now we're talking about spreading resources out even thinner than it originally was, which I am not a fan of that. So I mean, I guess whenever I originally said K-8 at Wilton, I was saying K-8 at Wilton because we only, we would close Holly and have one other middle school, so it was a way to, you know, satisfy some of the distance concerns in the southeastern part of the county so that they're not having to go all the way over to the southwestern part of the county, you know, in Butner. And that's really where that was coming from, not like a, hey, let's make Wilton a K-8 regardless of what other middle school decisions we make, kind of situation.
Yeah, and there's another thing about Wilton, it only has a population capacity of 452 students, and it's already at 250. So I don't know if we can add those extra grades from like an actual space perspective.
And you know, I really thank you so much, I agree with you with that, and, and you know, we are, I think as someone has mentioned, and I think it was you, Dr. Frederick, with regards to us putting this into phases, you know, everything can't be done at one time. If we want to focus on doing all of this, you know, definitely, we have a lot of phases of things we're talking about with K-8, because I have to say with K-8, I have had parents that says, you know, here we are, trying to, you know, start from K to grade eight, and we know seventh and eighth graders, you know, why did we have middle schools? So, you know, I have some things there, but I, we can't do everything in one session, and we do need to put this in phases and then look at it, you know, phase by phase, let's look at this next, let's look at this next, and we can't do everything in one fell swoop. And I, I wouldn't really want to get into moving into another motion with something else, and we haven't gotten the first one, and what we're gonna do with that off the table yet. So I just wanted to put that up there.
So Ethel, if I may actually just kind of comment on, and just to clarify a little bit further, the reason, the reasoning really behind doing K-6 and doing that incrementally is really so that you're able to maintain the culture that has already been started in each of those K-6 schools?
Yes.
So that way then you're not, you're not all of a sudden throwing a whole bunch of middle schoolers that have been used to ju-, being around just a bunch of other middle schoolers and bringing culture that may have started to, you know, grow in those middle schools and now bringing them down to more of an elementary school level. So that's really why whenever I had originally said K-8, I was saying definitely go from an incremental K-6, the fifth graders become the sixth graders, the sixth graders then become the seventh graders the following year, and so on and so forth, until that school is at its capacity. Because then, yeah, for sure, we don't, I mean, we definitely want to keep the, like especially at Wilton, and then, you know, potentially eventually Stovall Shaw, like we would want to keep those winning cultures continuous through.
We have had a lot of interest from parents. Now whether that will translate into actual decisions, I don't know, but there has been a lot of interest in having K-6 or K-8 for elementary students. There are many who just do not want to go to middle school, and we have a lot, probably in Gramble Academy too, that, or that way.
So, I got, I got something I'd like to say real quick. So, as, going back to what Amanda was saying about what are hills to die on, like what's something nobody wants to talk about, I am open to the, if we second the motion to do this study, we are acknowledging that at this point, we don't want to have the conversation about just having two middle schools or a, or two middle schools and one K-8. If that is a hill that somebody wants to die on, where there's nobody, like you don't want to entertain that idea and there's enough of those, then we should just move forward with seconding this motion. I am open to having the conversation about consolidating or reimagining what the middle school level looks like. If other people are not willing to do that at this time, then we should second the motion. But I will not second the motion.
Madam Chair, I, I just want to get back to my motion.
Okay.
Because I, right now, the motion is to do a study of Creedmore. And if you're going to do it in the, you know, that part, we, I think we agree on. But I don't want to leave this room saying we are going to do a study of Creedmore and say, and that's all we say to the community, or the teachers at Creedmore or Holly. I mean, I think it needs to be more to it than that, because I think if we are going to make, do a study of Creedmore to close it, then why are we going to do that? And in my opinion, we are going to do that because we need to move the students out of Holly there. And I, I don't know how to put all that into a motion, but I just don't want to leave here today with just that on, with this, that going out there. And, you know, getting into talking about K-8 and that, it's something that we can do at a later date.
But I think the issue, Mr. Pease, is that we're really running into, like, the closing Creedmore is the, and distributing those students throughout the other elementary schools is really kind of the first building block that it seems like all of these processes are starting with, right? And so by distributing those students, then from there, we need to decide what happens at the middle school level. Are we going to go one middle school and a K-8 in the southern end, or are we gonna do, you know, the two middle schools and moving Holly to Creedmore, whatever? So I think at the start of it all, Creed, closing Creedmore, doing that study as a solo block is the least messy at this point. Because then, the, what we do with the middle schools is now almost the standalone issue. You know, now, now this is, that's the opportunity for more decision-making and more discussion, and I'm not saying to delay it further to another meeting necessarily. I'm just saying that I think those are separate, like those are two separate issues. The first one being need to, needed to say, close Creedmore, okay? Now what are we doing with the middle school level? Are we in agreement on two middle schools and moving Holly to Creedmore, or are we in the agreement of Butner STEM and Wilton K-8? You know, with the incremental thing, or whatever? You know what I mean? But I think that's kind of where we're at, to simplify all of this and keep it.
Would the study not present the options as to how that could be done? I mean, you close it, but would, wouldn't that be part of the study? What would happen to the students?
It, the study is however the board defines it. The current motion is to study closing Creedmore Elementary and putting Holly students in the former Creedmore Building.
Because that motion basically pigeonholes us into that path, essentially.
Pigeons on the what path?
So it doesn't, it, so, okay, if we get to that and we decide, okay, we don't want to close Holly, now we have to do another study saying, let's close Creedmore, and now what happens if we split?
So, as I think about it, you, you know, the statute is that before you close a school, you must have a study done of closing it. It doesn't say before you move a school. And so, the question I see is if you do a study that is close Creedmore and use the building for middle, as a middle school, and could the board then, after reviewing that study, decide we want to close Creedmore but not use the building for a middle school? I think that you could, because you, what you are doing under the law is closing Creedmore and that you will have studied.
But would you not then have to go ahead and do a study on closing, closing Holly?
You'd have to do a study on whatever, yes, whatever you were gonna do with Holly.
You'd be closing Holly.
If, if you decided instead of moving Holly to close it, yes, you would need to do a study of that.
Another study.
My motion is to close Creedmore and move the Holly students to that school. Now, if you're moving kids from one school to another, you ain't gotta do, have a study on closing that school that you're moving the kids from.
I think we found the hill that he wants to die on. Which is fine, and I'm not saying, I'm just saying that's, I mean, that's your passion, and I get it, I get it.
Saying that I want to die on is your opinion. Mine is not, mine is, I'm not gonna die on it.
No, okay.
I think I understand what you're saying, though. You're saying, let's just simplify the motion, let's just say, do the study to close Creedmore, and then from there we can make decisions about what to do with the kids from Holly after that.
Right.
Because that seems to be the one thing that we can all agree on.
Right, because those, it's, it may or may not result in a closure, and so it may be a moot point.
You're just trying to streamline them.
Right.
Well, what I'm concerned about, we streamline the motion, or we streamline in the process, and we are on a time crunch to let people know what we're doing. And our staff has to have time. That's my concern.
Well, I'm saying, can we clo-, can we agree, like, do the motion, close Creedmore, and now have, and now, okay, Creedmore's closing, can we now talk about what do we want to do with the middle school?
Right.
In the same meeting, not tomorrow, now?
My motion says what to do with the middle school.
I hear that, but we are not discussing, we, there are, there are many people right now that are talking about K-8 and that are not talking about K-8, and I would like to have the discussion of where do people stand on that issue? And?
Madam Chair, I want to cut it, be discussed to, we know that Holly is need repairs, so their school is in no shape to inherit for kids for next year. Is that the first issue on our agenda, to take those kids to someplace else right now? Because of the condition, the cost of Holly? So can we vote, is this one thing we have to agree upon? That Holly right now, due to the cost of repair, that school be closed for 2022, 23 school year? Then outside, where those kids gonna go?
Well, if we're moving students from one campus to another, the school number stays the same.
Okay.
And the name stays the same.
Okay.
So it really is not a closure of the school itself. Now, if you are going to consolidate Holly students with Butner STEM, or some variation of that with K-8, then you're looking at closing Holly, middle school.
I don't know, this may help.
The motion is not to close Holly, it's to move it. And there's a real difference between closing the school and moving it from one campus to another. That, that's the, I mean, that's, that's a whole different process.
I don't know if this will help, but since what you're doing today is commissioning studies, the board can commission more than one study, even if they are mutually exclusive. In other words, you could commission the study that he is suggesting and also commission a study of closing Holly, and then when you get them both back, decide which one you want to move forward.
I would just say, you all got me going in circles here, okay? I just have to put it out there. Because, you know, I, I hear what you're saying. You know, one is that we're gonna close Holly, yes, we're gonna close it. If you're gonna close it, where the students gonna go? Are we gonna send them to the other middle schools, or are we going to, that someone's put on the table, close Creedmore and send the Holly Middle School students to Creedmore? Now, you know, this is not rocket science, but I know we're making it rocket science, but, you know, either close, we're gonna close Holly, I think everybody agreed to that because of the cost. Okay, you're gonna close it. Where the students gonna go? Well, one of two things, they, you know, they can either go to the other two middle schools and get, you know, broken up and go to those, that's where they would go, or they need to go to another facility, which is what we're talking about, which is Creedmore Elementary, close that, and that's where the students from Holly will go.
Right.
Versus to, you know, but, you know, we can, we can be doing this another, another year, here we go.
No, but, right, but the issue, the issue is really just that it's not, you're, in one scenario, in the scenario that Mr. Pease is suggesting, you're not actually closing Holly. In the other scenario, where the students get divided to a K-8 versus Butner STEM, yes, then you're closing Holly and you're also closing Creedmore Elementary. So two schools are getting closed whenever you divide the middle school students to K-8 and to Butner STEM. One school, which is Creedmore Elementary, gets closed if you simply relocate the students to Holly.
And there is not enough room for combining the two totally at Butner Middle School. It's over, way over.
Yeah, I mean, they would have to be redistricted.
So you'd be redistricting Northern Gramble and Butner STEM?
There is a motion on the floor that I made about an hour ago, that basically says, and I'll restate it, motion to study closing Creedmore Elementary. And once that's closed, move the Holly students to that campus with the name of Holly, Holly Annex, or whatever, we, we need to keep the Holly name with the students, with the idea that we can continue to call whatever we do at the Holly campus, Holly. Can we do that? If we make one an Annex or one, 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 two?
So with the name of Holly being used both for the old and new campuses?
Right. That's my motion.
I, I actually have a, I feel like a really important question that I haven't, don't remember reading or seeing anything about, and I don't, it's more for administration. And I know this is kind of out there in the weeds, but if, if we're moving a campus from out in the county to inside the city limits of Creedmore, we would be losing our full-time SRO, who's a deputy at Holly, is that correct? And then, no, what would that, I'm sorry, Mr. Graham, what would that look like?
Not necessarily, that's not, they could just move to the, to that location, or we could talk with the City of Creedmore to see what their pleasure was.
Okay.
The current arrangement is one that's based on sort of history.
Okay.
And, but that, the SRO situation would not be prohibitive in, in making this move. It's a good question.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I, sorry, I have an attorney question. So my, am I correct in understanding what you're saying about the laws, that if, if we, I, if we wanted to close Creedmore as an elementary and move Holly, that would be one study? If we wanted to close Holly and read, and reimagine how our middle school's level looks like, whether that's K-8 or just redistricting, that would be required to be a separate study, correct?
That's correct, because in the first scenario, you're just moving Holly, and in the second scenario, you would be closing it, yes.
But, but both would be required to do either of those paths?
No.
Well, in the first scenario, yes, you would need a study because you're closing Creedmore, yes.
Okay, but if we wanted to clo-, I mean, if we closed Holly, and whether that was reallocate those students to the North and South Middles, or, and add a K-8 and redistribute them to the three locations, that would be a separate study that would need to be required, right?
Yes, to close Holly, I don't know that you would have to specify.
But those can't happen in the same study?
Well, I mean, you can put them in one document, there's not really, the law doesn't get that specific.
So then, so then why don't we, I don't know if we amend a motion or something like that, but, and have in the same study that we investigate what it would look that we investigate what it would look like to close Creedmore as an elementary and move Holly's students there, and investigate what it would look like to close Holly, and then have, then that would give, just by itself, and then we could have, use that information in the same study to have a new conversation about what to do at the middle school level across the board. Can we do that on the same study?
Not according to my motion.
Right, I mean, theoretically...
That's why I'm saying we amend the motion.
I'm not amending the motion.
Then I'll make a new motion where that's what the study would look like.
No, I don't think you can do that.
So, so where we are procedurally is, I think, seeing if there's a second for Mr. Peace's motion, if there is, uh, Mr. Frederick, you can make a motion to amend Mr. Peace's motion. Your motion to amend would need a majority vote.
Okay.
Can I just ask one question? When we're talking about doing a study for redistrib, redistributing the students and looking at the K-8 model in that, what type of timeline would be needed by our staff to get that done? I mean, I mean realistically.
All the time we can get. We're, we're normally doing school tours in December, parents are typically making decisions in January, and we're registering, so time is of essence at this point.
Madam Chair, are we going straight to K-8 or K-6 first? We going straight to K-8 or K-6?
I think the, what, the discussion, I think, was around, when we were talking about it, from one sense, we could keep case, if you kept some of the kids at Wilton and you extended it to a K-8, you would have, um, an option that a lot of parents would like. But the reality is, trying to implement three grade levels in one year might be a little much. So, it would start at K-6, and then if the interest is there, you move up. And then we were looking at possibly Stowe-LShaw is a site to do that, too. But that's not part of this motion at this point.
Actually, I am curious, do, we would not need to make a, like, would that, if we decided to do a K-6 at Stowe-LShaw, that doesn't require any kind of closure study or any of that kind of stuff? So, how would that, yeah, I mean, like, we wouldn't...
Well, it doesn't require a closure study to the extent that you're not closing another middle school in order to get enough children to fill that up.
Yeah, right, so it's just...
Okay, we've had discussion, I think it's time we call for a second for Mr. Peace's motion.
Second.
Second.
I mean, you can have further discussion.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, we're gonna take a vote, and we're gonna do it roll call because we are virtual, if that's okay? Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Say yes or no?
Uh, yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Sorry.
Okay. Ms. Lan, Dr. Lancy?
Yes.
Ms. LeBret?
Yes.
Mr. Peace?
Yes, yes.
Dr. Frederick?
Yes.
Yes, for me as well, the motion passes.
Uh, Anderson.
Ms. Anderson.
Ms. Anderson?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Anderson.
That's okay, I'm there, that's...
I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, for me, thank you.
Okay, all right. The motion was to have a study on the closure of Creedmore with the intent to move the children that are at Holly to the Creedmore campus.
While maintaining the Holly name.
While maintaining the Holly name at the Holly Middle School campus.
Right, the way I have it is with the name of Holly being used in the names of both the old and new campuses.
Yes.
But to clarify, if we decide that moving the students to Holly is not what we wanna do, we can still proceed with the closure study as the closure of Creedmore.
I believe that's accurate, yes. You will have studied closing Creedmore, I think you will have covered all the required elements of that.
Yeah. I don't wanna end up in another meeting and then go, well, now that's a new step y'all have to do.
Okay.
Well, I, I still think there's value in, in making a motion, which I will do, to amend the just now approved motion, to add a second level to the study where we're just investigating closing Holly so that we can entertain the idea of making a K to six, K to eight conversation. 'Cause that would be a separate study that we would have to do.
Well, you could just put that as a new motion, you don't have to amend the previous one.
Then I will move to do that. I think I want to move to make a study so that we investigate closing Holly so that we can have a conversation and use that evid, that, that information to have the conversation about K-six to K-eight, to, to basically give us the information we need to discuss other middle school options.
Are you talking about the other option to combine some of the students from Butnerstem Middle with the Holly students as part of that?
Yes, just, I mean, 'cause that would be a separate thing, like, if we close, 'cause what Mr. Peace's motion is investigating is closing Creedmore to use for Holly, and that would, that is the only avenue that allows us to do with that motion. If we want to do anything different with Holly's students at a middle school level, we have to have a separate study that investigates just the closure of Holly.
Could you explain to me what you wanna do different from the motion that I made?
Well, yeah, so what, I mean, any of the other middle school options, whether that is just having two middle schools in the, and I'm, these are just all of the things that have been discussed. If we close Holly and have just the one middle school in the north and the one middle school in the south, and that, we would have to use this Holly study. If we want to have the North and South Middle School and a K to six, K to eight in either Wilton or in Stowe-LShaw, we would still have to have this Holly study. Anything else we want to do besides transplanting the Holly students to Creedmore and renaming it, we would have to have just this Holly study by itself. Because the attorney said that we need to have a study, anytime we have a school closure, which if we do any other path of, of doing stuff with the middle schools, we would still have to have this Holly closure study.
So, what I don't understand is when you move a grade level in a school, if you got K-five and you make it a K-six, why do we need a study?
Well, my understanding is that the study is to close Holly instead of moving it and to reassign its students, and so that's what requires a study.
And so, if anybody wants to do the K-six or K-eight option and discuss that, which we can't do if we put all those students in Creedmore long-term, we still have to have this study done about just closing Holly. If nobody wants to do that...
But to do the K-six or investigate that for both Stowe-LShaw and for Wilton without dealing with closing Holly, you could still do that without closing Holly and would not need a motion, I mean, would not need a study to do that.
So, let me sort of, sort of try and address the, the what-ifs. It seems there are two ways that could be accomplished, right? So, if you are interested in adding grade level, I'm gonna say, because we were talking K-six or K-eight, adding grade levels to a current elementary school, theoretically, I suppose, yes, you could do that without closing Holly. But if you do the study that Dr. Frederick has, has moved to do, you can receive the study and look at it and decide to close Holly and create one of those programs, or you can decide not to close Holly and still create one, so it doesn't, if you feel like you have enough students.
So, we're leaving open the consolidation of the two middle schools with that study, is that correct?
Right, so, and Dr. Frederick, if I may make a, a suggestion which you don't have to accept, but since part of the study is, addresses the impact on other schools, in other words, like, if you're doing the study of closing a school, one of the things the staff has to address is, is where those students will go, would it make sense to have it be a study of closing Holly and reassigning its students and ask that information be included about the option of adding grade levels to an elementary campus as one option?
Yeah, and, and redistricting as another option of just putting those students in Butnerstem and Oxford.
Okay.
'Cause the other thing that I, I was actually just thinking is, as, and I, I hesitate to say this. I think I'm just gonna leave it go and then I'll make my statement afterwards.
Well, 'cause the, the thing I wanna clarify is, I'm, 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 I don't think, the thing that I wanna make sure that my opinion is known on is I do not think we make a K, a K to eight and have Creedmore be New Holly and the other two middle schools. We don't need four schools from a student population perspective in our county. It's not my idea to have the K to eight be a third middle school option in the county. I'm just saying we have to have this study to give a different option and explore those besides re-converting the Creedmore campuses as a middle school.
Okay, so I guess then my comment does kind of tie into this. So then, the other kind of level to that, and I'm wondering if this is where people are getting confused or, or concerned, is if we, if we were to decide to say, for example, put a K-8 eventually at Wilton, but doing it incrementally, K-six the first year, K-seven the second year, K-eight the, the third year. So then, it would almost make sense then to do it in a descending way at Holly where, you know, the next year then they don't have a sixth grade, the following year they don't have a seventh grade, and then they don't have an eighth grade the last year. So that that way, we're not ending up with a massive dispersion of a whole bunch of students for like one or two years.
Either way doing, that would require a Holly closure study.
Yes.
Yes, and something that might have to be included in the study is, at some point, you have an administr, I, I don't know, state funding, and you might not be allotted administrators for a building that only has a one grade in it, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause like, I'm okay with us moving Holly to Creedmore and having that be New Holly and doing that. Like, I'm okay with that path, but this give, having to do this Holly closure study allows us to still have other options to explore. If we don't want those other options, that's fine, we don't have to, nobody needs to second or approve my motion. But I'm just only saying we could do this study, and I think it's good information, so that we have other middle school options that we can then do.
Madam Chair, let me just see, let me say one, one, one other thing on the motion that's, that's passed. I think if we go through the process of having people understand where we are with that, it's going to be a, a big lift from where we are. Because, you know, I'm interested in doing a couple of things, and number one is to have the people, staff and teachers at Holly, know from this meeting what their future is. And the more we deal with the possibility of closing Holly and moving the kids to another middle school, it's going to put us right back to where we've been for the last couple of years, where people, they are not, not knowing what tomorrow's gonna bring or what's next year's gonna bring. That's just my concern with doing it, with doing this other study.
I mean, Mr. Peace, that's my concern also, and I don't want that to be phrased in a way that it makes it seem like I'm not considering that as well. We have enough teacher vacancies that the teachers from Holly can get moved to those new middle schools. That's one of the areas that we have the most vacancies in. There's opportunity for that staff to have those new positions as well. I'm just saying if we don't, and again, we don't have to do this Holly closure study, but if we don't do the Holly closure study, the only middle school solution we're investigating is the Creedmore Elementary conversion. If anybody has any interest in entertaining a different path, which still gives, uh, all of our staff the ability to maintain jobs just at different locations, which solves a lot of other things that people have what's concerns over, we, we need to do this clo, this study regardless.
Well, I just respectfully disagree.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any comments? I had one or two myself. I really think we have to think, I know we have to look at numbers and that type of thing, but I honestly believe from the bottom of my heart, and I'm thinking about kids, I'm thinking about families, I think we have to look at doing what we need to do with the least disruption to transportation, students adjusting, and being settled, knowing where they're going. Our high schools, I think we pretty much decided where, where we're going with that. But I agree that sometimes a large school can offer more things. But there's also research that says that when you have a lot of students that are struggling, smaller can be better. And we do have a lot of students struggling right now, so I don't have a major problem with that. Knowing the way this county is laid out and the mileage and the distances, we're gonna always have a challenge with how we configure. With the growth coming, it's a very good chance that those middle school populations, in the Southern Union particularly, are gonna increase quite a bit. So, that's my feeling. I'd like for, I'd like for our parents and our teachers and staff to pretty much know where we're going when we leave here. I think it's, will do the most good for our staff and for our students, parents. That's my opinion.
I would like to just, the, so I don't disagree with those statements, um, as, as far as the small to large. I mean, I guess I look at, our students are currently struggling, and they're already in small schools. And I don't know that, what, like, keeping it at this small, I mean, like, I, I guess I look at it as they're struggling and we're not gonna make the schools even smaller than they currently are because we already have too large of a footprint. So, in some ways, keeping the school small is only ensuring that they're potentially just gonna stay where they are and not get the growth. That's just a thought.
I don't agree with that, but anyway, that's okay.
Um, but the other thing, the other thing with pertaining to growth, I feel that anticipating growth that is coming, while, yes, I am always hopeful and want to look at things glass half-full, I'm also concerned because that is where we were whenever they decided to open Granville Central, and then we had an influx of charter schools, and we don't know if that's gonna happen again. And my concern is that if we are presented with this current opportunity of consolidating and really making the most efficient use of our resources and our, and our teachers and everything that we have to give our students the best that we can at this very moment, then if the growth comes, and so do the charter schools, we are in equally as good a, a position now as we will be then. And if we get to that point and we have left a large footprint, and then we also get more charters with the growth and the bottom falls out yet again, I'm concerned that we're putting the future board right back into the same position that we currently are in. And I really don't wanna do that for the next, the next people to be sitting on this ground.
Well, we do have subdivisions in the Oxford area that are most...
And I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that.
Right.
But we also don't know what charter schools, because there have been applications.
I'm just tired, frankly, and maybe I shouldn't say this, I'm just tired, frankly, on letting charter schools decide what we do as public schools to a point.
But that's where, we know that they're coming, and it's unfortunate, and we need to do what we can to ins, in, um, insulate our school system the best that we can at this moment instead of making them the enemy, make them our ally. What if we protect what we have so that when they come, it doesn't hurt whenever students leave to go to them?
I know we cannot guess hu, human behavior. We cannot guess where parents gonna send their kids to once they move to Granville County. We hope they stay in Granville County, but if they don't, we gotta do the best for our kids while we're here. That's all we gotta do, and make our schools stellar schools here with teacher... And make our schools stellar schools here with teacher learning is great one. Because we don't know. We didn't know they were coming years ago when we decided to build schools down in Grand County. Because they was growing fast down there years ago and they're not now. But so happened, charter schools came out of nowhere. So we didn't expect this growth from charter schools. That's why now we lost many kids in Grand County. Because we had growth in the Southern End Grand County for years, and then there come our charter schools. So we got to do the best we can, what we have to work with.
Like I said, I just was hoping that we would be able to come out of this meeting with our folks knowing which way we're going. As far as the K eight or K six, depending on how many schools you do it in, because you'd have to do a fair amount if you were combining Butner Middle and Holly, and then spreading them out. That also, some staffing shortages could even be worse, I don't know. Staffing is going to be an issue, I think, no matter what at this point, just because of the teacher shortage. But right now, I don't want to lose the ones we've got because we delayed what we're going to do. That's just my feelings.
I would like to second Dr. Frederick's motion, if it's still on the table.
Okay.
Dr. Frederick made a motion.
Can I clarify it one more time?
Yeah, you want to clarify the motion and then we're going to call for a second.
Yep, so the motion is specifically to investigate what the closure of Holly would look like and also investigate the options that that would give us, how redistricting the middle schools would look, as well as details about expanding some of the existing elementary locations to be K to eight eventually, like details in the future, to investigate what that would look like with those Holly students and how the faculty would be able to integrate into those existing campuses.
Ms. LeBreguet.
It is, it is just an opt, a motion to invest, to create a study as a second use of the middle school strategy, basically. Instead of just doing the Creedmore thing, we have to investigate Holly if we want to do anything else at a middle school level.
I have a question. And that basically is for administration. If we go down this path, does it pretty much guarantee that we are not going to be able to move kids out of Holly for the next school year? That's an administrative question, I guess.
I'll maybe try and take a stab at that. And I was going to add, I think earlier when the question was raised about the time for turnaround, and of course, you know, whenever we did a study from scratch, that was usually, we were asking for a minimum of like 60 days, and even more for some of them. But the good news is, we, you know, there is a study about the closure of Creedmore, and there is an architectural study about the relocation of Holly to Creedmore. And then we've since provided additional information to you guys that was done. So a lot of that work has been done for the first motion. Regarding Dr. Frederick's motion, there is a study that exists that was titled G C Holly School Closure and the Relocation of Seventh and Eighth Graders to Butnerstam Middle School. So it's similar to what he is proposing, but it is not as inclusive. So that would probably take some additional time to put together. But simply the closure of Creedmore, the study that we did before, it hasn't changed. I mean, we can go in and add some data from last school year, but it's essentially the same information.
Yeah, and I think part of the merit of the study that I'm proposing is it could reinforce Mr. Peace's motion as the only practical path forward for the middle schools. I feel like it's just our diligence to investigate other options so that we don't only put our eggs in one basket. If the study comes back and it's either timeline impractical, financially impractical, logistically impractical, that's all important information. But I think we should at least look at it so we're making the decision on like with a little bit more data to see if there's anything else that we need to have from a, like a, an information perspective.
And I think regardless of what, how many closure studies we have currently, we're going to end up coming out of the next meeting that we have the closure studies in hand to be able to make a decision, which we would be doing regardless. I mean, we would have to have that meeting anyways with just the singular study. So I don't think this puts us behind in any form.
And you know, I have to add to that. You know, of course, I did go along with the first motion that we have passed, but as Dr. Frederick is saying, the more you lay on the table to let the parents know, hey, we're looking at this, we're looking at this, you know, we're not focused just centered on one thing. And that can help us to, you know, ease their mind and tension saying, hey, you just wanted to, you know. You know what, that's what I'm saying. So what you put out there, it does, it helps to, you know, because it very well may come back and say, nope, you're going the right way with that first motion after we do that study, because I have some inklusions about it as well. But, hey, you put something else out there to look at, and you know, you're not close-minded, so, yes.
Yeah, because someone earlier said that they've heard from members of the community that they have asked questions about a K to eight option. Well, if we do the study and find that to have the impractical or whatever, then we can reassure those parents, be like, hey, we looked into it, this is why we can't do that in our county or something. It just gives us information that we need for the parents, for the faculty, for everybody. It just, it's diligence that would reinforce Mr. Peace's motion or give information that might show a viable option as an alternative, which we can then discuss with information in hand.
Exactly, and you know, one of the other things, because I've looked at this in the write-up of all the paperwork I have here from you all. I know we're talking Butnerstam Middle and we're talking Northern Granville Middle. And I know we are saying that Butnerstam is on the southern side, but I'm looking at I-85, when I left Butnerstam to get across to go over to Creedmore, that's a little stretch there, and parents are going to look at it that way. Well, if I was a parent, I would look at it that way too. So, just that input.
Madam Chair, if I may?
This is due to.
So I certainly am not going to speak to, you know, the opinions or information about that argument. I'll just, because we were asked about the timeline, I guess. So to, you know, and I think my colleagues and I are in agreement about this. Editing the Creedmore study is very straightforward. There's not a lot of work there. There are two or three working days for our staff, I don't know, less than that, until the next board meeting. So, you know, we, it's going to be extremely challenging for us to get a study looking at the redistribution, the closure of Holly and the redistribution of those students, all those different combinations, back to you all quickly in enough time to make this happen for next school year. I just, you know, I'm just trying to be candid and straightforward about that. I think it's going to be very challenging.
When do the schools of choice actually go out to the parents and so forth?
Well, so as you know, we're rebranding this as open enrollment, and it needs to coincide with our registration process for secondary schools. And so February is the, you know, early February is like the absolute latest that needs to start happening. Yeah. So I, you know, I just, I want to be candid and honest that I think we're, the timeline is already extremely tight. For next, for next school year. There's just a tremendous amount of work that's going to have to be get done after the decision is made, too. You know, all of the logistics of Mr. Graham and Mr. Perry, all of us will have to be involved in.
So then, then the purpose of my motion, if it's impractical, I mean, there's the need for us to get the students out of Holly as soon as possible because of the situation that's there. So if my motion still has value but not practicality for next year, it might be, I still think it's valuable because it would give us information so that if we ever wanted to discuss other options at a middle school level in the future, that's still something that we can reference to see. Because like, if we find that if we chose this path, redistricting was impractical anyways, then we can use that information to six years down the road and say like, oh, no, we did this back in 2022, this isn't a viable option. And I still think there's value to having some of that stuff investigated personally.
Well, I was going to say, the other thing too that we could do is, is move, potentially move forward with this motion of closing Creedmore, moving students to Holly, but then also, we could still have the closure study for Holly in the possibility of researching the K six for a future year, for the following year after that. So, I'm just, you know, throwing that out there. So that is not quite as imminent, but really the closure of Creedmore is imminent, if we want to be honest.
My, my final, I guess my word with this, is trying to get students out of Holly as soon as possible. And if doing something different is going to cause it to happen another year, that's fine. But, not that I'm disagreeing with it happening, I'm just disagreeing with it happening right now. Because if it's going to cause the students to stay in Holly another year to make, get all these studies done for the closure, then I just think that it needs to happen at a later time. Because what I'm looking at is having something in place for next year so that people there will know where they're going to be and what they're going to be doing. And they've been, this will be, this will be like the second or third year they end of the school year, not knowing where they're going to be the next following year, because they just don't know.
So, can I amend my motion?
Excuse me, excuse me, I was just going to say, not to discount the value of what information would be learned, because we are going to reach a point, hopefully, where the temporary solution won't be the final solution. And we will hopefully be able to use, have enough students that we will be able to rebuild that portion that's so bad at Holly. But I don't know when that will be. But at that time, we have decisions to make down the road. We definitely will have to make other decisions possibly.
Can I amend my motion or do we have to vote on it as is?
You can amend it if the person who seconded it agrees.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, so if, after following what Stan said, if the only viable option for next year is to follow the Creedmore route, I say we continue down that path. I moved, I amend slash move to make the new, to still investigate a study of investigating, in following the Creedmore study, using that information to create a study off of that to redistrict and investigate the options of K to eights in other locations, as well as redistricting with the new three middle schools, with their existing locations, with Creedmore being New Holly, Butnerstam, and the one up in Northern Granville. So that would still be a study necessary for us to investigate. Because I guess, I'm making this motion so that if we ever want to investigate a K to eight, K to six, or the best use of the current population distribution of our middle school students, we have that information to make that decision. But we can use the information that comes out of the Creedmore conversion study to then, like, hopefully shorten that, not for next year, but so that if we need to do something, if in two years we want to talk about a K to eight school in southeast Granville County or something like that, we have, we need to do that anyways. But I feel like piggybacking this study off of the Creedmore conversion one might make that a little bit smoother. Not to amend Mr. Peace's, but to take that information and then do, use that information to add some different value for the community, for parents who are interested in that option, for future board members to have information on K to six, K to eight investigation, all that kind of stuff.
I have no problem with doing it. I'm just concerned right now, our staff has got so much on their plate to do. To do something like that's going to take a lot of time if you do it well. I just would like to think that we didn't have to have it right now.
Well then, with respect, if we, if nobody wants to investigate that, then we never needed to talk about those options in the first place. If the only thing that was practical from a timeline perspective was the Creedmore conversion to New Holly, then I think dreaming up some of those other middle school opportunities was unnecessary.
May I ask a question, Dr. Frederick, about your motion?
Sure.
It sounds like you've removed from the motion the actual closure of Holly at this time, is that?
Correct.
Okay, in which case, does your motion necessitate that the study be presented at the same time? Or could it be that you're asking?
Absolutely, in the future.
Right, so that it could be that you're asking the staff to bring that in, to study those options and bring it back to the board later in the year?
A hundred percent unnecessary to do it within the near future. I'm just, I'm only saying, I'm only moving to do this now because we're already, we've already opened up the wound of the consolidation conversation and stuff so that we don't have to revisit having a new study for new middle school options and stuff in the future. And again, I'm only doing, I only think this is prudent if people feel strongly about looking into K to eight options or other redistrict use for whoever in the community would find this information valuable, K to eight uses or other middle school redistricting options. If we never want to have those conversations, we don't need to have this motion passed. It just gives us information and data to communicate with parents and the public or other people about those two different options.
Would you like to put a timeline in your motion? Like, to have, you would like a presentation from the administration by the end of the school year or something like that?
I mean, can we just do the end of 2023? By the end of 2023?
Well, I would, I would think that if we were, if we were to want to move forward with it for not next, not next year, but the following year, we would want that kind of information probably this, later this spring, so that we have those discussions, so that if we were to move forward with it, we would have ample time for them to actually move forward instead of feeling a time crunch like we are at this point.
Sure, so let's have that timeline, so that end of school, end of the school year, we have that information to see if even those K to six, K to eight options are viable.
So I'll read back what I have as a motion to study the options of K, let me phrase this as adding grades to existing elementary campuses and/or middle school redistricting more generally, and present back to the board by the end of the school year.
Yes, and again, I want to, since we've had a little, I've been talking a lot about this. I want to consolidate all my opinion on one thing. I think this study is important in follow-up to the other board members' ideas about, that we talked about two weeks ago, about middle schools. If the, if we are all in agreement that we would never want to talk about anything besides converting Creedmore to be New Holly, then this study I'm proposing is unnecessary to a degree. I think the data still could be good for communicating with the public about reassuring them like, no, we talked about K to six, eight, that doesn't work in our county. But again, to reinforce, it just gives us data, but if four other board members, middle school options, if you guys don't want to explore those options, I'm comfortable just doing Mr. Peace's motion.
I would just like to put it out there because with all of the paperwork that I have looked at, quite a few people have talked about the K to eight option, like at Wilton and like you said, the other middle schools. So it is something that I think my fellow board members have put out there, that it's something that's viable. So while it's going to be done after the fact, now that we're going to move ahead with the Creedmore motion, then I say, hey, keep it on, let the study take place and we'll have it in hand.
So do you second the motion, Apple?
Yes, I do. I don't talk, Ms. LeBreguet, but I do.
Thank you.
Can you repeat that motion?
Sure, the motion was to ask administration to study the options of adding grades to existing elementary campuses or middle school redistricting more generally and present back to the board by the end of the 22, 23 school year. or middle school redistricting more generally and present back to the board by the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
I think it's time to call for a vote. We'll do a roll call. Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Dr. Lindsay?
Yes.
No.
I vote no, just because I think it's gonna add a lot of confusion to the public. Not that it's necessarily a bad idea.
And Dr. Frederick?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And it's my understanding that this study that the board has voted for will be done by the end of the school year. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you in advance to the administration for investigating that.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is upcoming events and announcements. Twenty-second through January third is holiday break, annual leave for our staff and teachers. January ninth is our regular meeting here at Mary Potter at six o'clock PM. January twelfth is winter graduation. It will be in the South Grandville High School Auditorium from six to seven PM. And I hope everybody will be able to come. Is there anything the new board members need to know about the winter graduation, Dr. McLean? Is anything they need to know about the winter graduation? How about the gown part? You might want to. We don't wear gowns for winter graduation. Okay, great.
A public hearing? Well, it sounds like the board would like to wait for the study.
Well, do we want, do we want to go ahead and set some tentative dates?
There hasn't been a motion to schedule a public hearing. You can certainly do that.
Does the public hearing, I guess, so the public hearing has to occur after we have the official closure study?
Um, the law isn't that specific. It just says before you close a school, you have to have a study and a hearing. Typically, you've had the hearing second so that the study is out there and people have all that information. But it doesn't say that one before the other.
Why can't we make a motion? I mean, how can we schedule a hearing today for middle of the month, next month, I guess? I mean, as soon as we get this done, better off we're going to be.
Dr. McLean, Dr. Winmore, what are your thoughts on how quickly you can get the updated study for Creedmore?
I'm thinking we can get it done very quickly. There's not a lot of modifications that need to be made to the Creedmore portion.
Well, when you get back from the holiday, do you think it would take about a week or what?
We could have it in time for the next board meeting.
I think we could, we could have it.
Okay, that would be great.
I mean, I think we need to.
Yes, I agree.
The board meeting's on the ninth.
Yes, ma'am.
So you could certainly, someone could make a motion to schedule a public hearing date between the ninth and the thirtieth of January or something like that.
We have to do two weeks' notice, correct? Okay. Dr. Winmore, could you take a look at the calendar and see what would work as far as our publication in newspapers?
So I, I think we'll be fine. If you, if you make a decision on the hearing today for some time in January, that, that will not be a concern. We will be able to get ample notice out to everyone.
So, but we wouldn't have to wait two weeks after it's been presented, correct? But that's.
No, because you're deciding today. So.
So the study has to be complete though before you make the hearing schedule.
No. I mean, I think the desire is that the study be complete before you have the hearing, but you can go ahead and schedule it. Knowing that the study, so.
So we could do like the twenty-third.
Sure.
That's, that's a little late. So why don't we look at seventeen, eighteen, or nineteen?
Okay, let's see. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Does it say, does our policy say two weeks or fourteen days? I mean, I mean.
Today, you can give the notice today.
Okay.
The nineteenth is the wrestling conference tournament at J F W P. Just, just throw that out there.
Do we have a work session? We have a work session on the sixteenth, I'm assuming.
No, the sixteenth is Martin Luther.
Oh, we'll be out. So we'll have that, the twenty-third. Okay. So we wouldn't have anything but one thing that week.
What, historically, what time of public hearings happened?
Historically, it's been in the evening. And historically, although this can vary, but the last few were done at the campus that was being discussed since that was close to the community being impacted.
Actually, the last time we did a Creedmore study, or Creedmore hearing, it was at Tar River.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it was. Does that give people enough time in the community to read the study?
I think they need, I think they need time to read it. What do you think, folks? Any thoughts?
Was there a problem with the seventeenth, January?
That's the seventeenth.
I think we do need to, you know, make sure they have time to read it. Because I don't think we want to be accused of trying to keep information and do it too quickly where people can't react to it.
Good digest.
Yeah, that's my thoughts. Now I'm open to you.
I agree.
Because it will be in board docs and will be available at that point.
Yes. Um, the only thing I'll note is maybe you want to leave the location open until you can check with the school, just in case they have an event.
Motion to hold a public hearing for the study on the seventeenth, second?
We'll do the roll call. Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Frederick?
Yes.
Ms. LeBrack?
Yes.
Dr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Okay. Motion is passed and we will have the public hearing on the closure. I knew I'd get in trouble going the wrong way.
I said yes.
Okay, the motion passes. I want to thank everybody for their hard work. It makes me happy to know that everybody's willing to share their ideas. And I think everybody was very respectful today. And hopefully, we can make this thing work for our kids. And that's the main thing. So with that being said, I'm gonna go back over the dates. What do you think? Six?
I said six.
It's six o'clock until they finish talking. Okay. Okay, thank you. And again, just remind you of the winter graduation, the regular board meeting. You'll get something, I'm sure, in an email. And I'd like to see if anyone has a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye. Happy holidays, everyone.